If you would please take your places so the meeting will continue. We're now ready to start the non-action items. Item A, the clerk would read.
A is discussion related to the downtown parking master plan recommendations.
Mr. City Manager.
Yes, governing body, Public Works Director Jason Peak's been doing a lot of work on this and he has a presentation for us tonight.
All right, we're ready.
Great, good evening Mayor and Council. I'm gonna kind of open the presentation and then after that I'm gonna invite Jerry Salzman, he's with Desmond Associates, to come back up to, or come up to the podium and kind of get into some of the specifics. But I just want to kind of remind you of why we're here. We're here to present recommendations for a downtown parking plan. And so we're looking for feedback and input on these recommendations with the idea of bringing back a final report to you, ideally at your, our December 5th meeting, but if we need to kind of continue discussion beyond that, we'd be happy, happy to do that. How we got here, we started this process in spring of 2017 when we hired Desmond to help us develop a downtown parking plan. And that started with data collection, not only the physical data, kind of counting the utilization of our on-street spaces, garages and surface lots, but also conducting a survey of users of downtown parking, putting together a stakeholder group and having a listening session to collect and identify issues. And we used that data and came back to that stakeholder group as well as you to say, here are the issues that the community feels that we need to solve with downtown parking. So we had some discussion about that to kind of seek consensus. And then based on that discussion, we brought back tonight recommendations for a parking plan that includes some specific recommendations on how we would do that. And I want to kind of hit the highlights of the plan so that you can kind of understand where we landed, but there's three key policy issues that we're putting forth in this plan to you. The first one that we would continue the free timed parking along Kansas Avenue as well as the free time parking that currently have the yellow hoods over the meters on the side streets. And so if this plan were adopted, we'd physically remove those meters and just have the timed signs in place. And that represents about 550 on-street spaces within the downtown area. The second part of the plan and the policy decision is a multitude of strategies, what we call demand strategies. And this is to make more efficient utilization of our parking supply. If you recall from the last meeting, we talked about we have areas where we have low utilization of on-street spaces, we have other areas where we have high utilization of on-street spaces. We talked about the utilization within our garages and our surface lots. And so there's a number of recommendations that include kind of increasing some pricing and other strategies that basically to better balance the use of that supply. And then lastly included in the last page of the report, and we'll go over that with the presentation, is, you know, we want to get consensus on these recommendations. And of course, these recommendations have, will generate revenue into the parking fund, but ultimately also have a cost to implement these recommendations. If you look at our financial forecast, that currently has a funding gap within the parking fund that if we move down this path, we'll need to come back to you and discuss, okay, how do we address this funding gap within, in the recommendations? We kind of have a, don't have to do that immediately because we do have a fund balance and plan within the 2018 budget monies to implement these recommendations. But as we get into 2019 and years beyond, if we keep core pieces of these recommendations, we would exceed our fund balance within the parking fund. So that's just a general overview of the parking discussion. I'm gonna turn it over to Jerry to give you some of the specifics and then we'll stand for any questions.
Could you just speak to, you had a committee of downtown businesses, et cetera. Could you speak to, so they have got, they've heard this and their response, what's their engagement?
Thank you Mayor for reminding me that I missed that part of my presentation. So we did, we put together a stakeholder group that was made up of downtown business owners, property owners, users of the parking system. We had three separate meetings, actually had a meeting with them today prior to this to present the recommendations. And there are some minor tweaks that they proposed at the meeting today that we'll be looking at incorporating into the recommendation, but overall I'd say there was kind of general support for the recommendations that are in the plan before you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. It's nice to be back. So as you remember, I may remember, the last time I was here, we talked about the old report, the initial report, the findings and the issues that we identified. And if you look at, and I'm, it's almost impossible to read, so I'm asking you to bear with us, but if you look at the matrix that's before you, the issues we put on one side going down and then the various recommendations that we developed are across the columns. And all of this relates to a document that we wrote up with each one described and the costs and the advantages and disadvantages, et cetera. But the recommendations come in several groups. And I don't think we need to go through every one of these right now, but the groups are important because there's recommendations that relate to the whole parking system, they tend to be technology and back office sorts of things. There's specific garage recommendations about how to price and how to operate it and what kind of equipment. There's on-street recommendations again about having meters and taking away meters in some areas. And then lastly, about some of the lots. So all that's in there and there's, the X's in the middle show how they all relate to the issues and then the relative financial impacts, et cetera. And then most importantly, sort of the outlines of sort of the timeline, how you might begin to implement. The short-term recommendations, the ST and the midterm and the long-term, because you can't just do all this at once, there's, it's just not really practical. So you start with some of the easy things, do them and build on over time. So that said, let me just take a minute to talk about a couple of the, sort of the, I think the most important issues. So we talked already about the hooded meters and basically establishing once and for all that they are, that there's a two-hour time limit, it'll be enforced and they'll be signed and you won't have the physical yellow hoods. The second issue is to, there's a number of meters that are under, highly underutilized and many of them outside here. And we've illustrated those in the dashed black line, encircling them. They tend to be on the periphery of downtown, north of Sixth and by the highway and then at the south end a bit. And we're suggesting again, removing the physical meters and not bothering to replace them with an updated meter, but rather to just use time limits to enforce them. And then lastly, of course, acquire some technology to help enforce, to make the enforcement easier so that you can much, much more rapidly go around the downtown and determine how long people have been there and then if they exceed the time, you know, find them, et cetera. So that's one thing about sort of rationalizing the meter system to keep the meters that are important and are actually used and sort of eliminating some of the other ones and just doing time limits. On the, whoops, sorry. On the other side of the equation, those meters that are heavily utilized on-street, we want to do everything we can to increase turnover on those spaces so that people can actually come downtown and find a space to park. And one of the ways to do that is to adjust the rates in those higher areas and you can see those in the solid circles. They tend to be around just north of the Capitol and on Jackson.
Jackson, Harrison.
Jackson, yeah, sorry. And those are the most heavily utilized meters in the downtown and we're suggesting raising the rate a bit from a dollar to a dollar and a quarter an hour, but at the same time getting new meters there that take credit cards and make it easy to pay and so you don't have to fumble with, if it's a dollar and a quarter, five quarters for an hour, which nobody has in their pockets. And similarly keep fines in proportion to the meter rates. And so that, that we think would, again, that'll give you a little extra revenue and it will make for a much, a much better system downtown. Then lastly, oh, then the garages of course, the, the system that runs the garages, both in the gates and that, the sort of the equipment that's in the garage as well as the back office is, in the exception of one garage, woefully old. And there are four systems that, each garage has a different system, so it's difficult for it to interact. And it makes it much harder for the staff to actually manage and figure out which permits are right and all that. So over time, we believe that getting a new system will make it much easier to, to control by the, from the parking, for the parking department as well as track on the revenue side and let people pay their monthly permits, you know, online or however they want to do it. All that is now easily accessible and it's just sort of the next step, but again, it takes a certain amount of cost. And we've also talked about the ability to potentially sell a few more permits in some of the, the sort of more active garages but not, that have not yet reached their capacity. And that's just sort of gravy in terms of revenue and that again will help to mitigate some of the costs that we've talked about. So, and here's some more things that, system-wide and the only one I really want to talk about is the number C, maybe D too, Capital Reserve Fund. When you have an expensive, a valuable asset like a number of garages and all this technology and meters, you have to invest in it. And you can't wait till the garage breaks or some concrete falls off. Particularly if you have an enterprise fund, you have to be putting aside money all along for those improvements. And so our, the financial pro forma shows a sort of a typical set aside for that, that over time will create enough rev, enough funds to pay for normal garage improvement, maintenance. And lastly, and we can ask, you can ask questions whenever it's convenient for you, but just to sort of finish up, I think the last issue is as more residential parking, more residential development is occurring in downtown, there's gonna be more focus on where do those people park and how they do it and it's not, there's, a clearer policy I think is appropriate, a sort of a permit for people to park somewhere, maybe not in front of their building necessarily on-street, but in garages, in lots. There's lots of ways to handle it and I think that's a, should be a goal over the, over the next few years. So, and that, and then here are the numbers. And I think Jason really described it, there's some sort of a, if you look at it, there's some shortfalls and most of the shortfall comes from, there's all, there's revenue growth, but the shortfall comes from this set aside for capital funds, which is $300 and something thousand dollars a year and some of the big technology costs, gates and stuff for the garages. So, and at some point, I think that would be, I think Jason is probably gonna come back to talk about that, the funding.
When you, you do these for all cities, all size, for cities our size, to what extent does the parking pay for its self-funding?
Parking?
Yeah, which is of course meters and garages.
Right.
Is our, is our two forms of revenue.
Yep.
To cover all expenses.
The more meters you have, the fewer garage spaces you have, the better you come, the closer you come to paying for yourself.
You say that again, please.
The more, that, garages don't pay for themselves until you get to $20 a day kind of a rate, basically, you know, in simple terms. And typically they're subsidized by meters, by on-street, you know. And that's just the way it is. You have, you know, your rates have historically been low, both in the garages and meters, and that's one of the reasons we're trying to push some of the high-density meter areas a little higher to help balance some of that. And the other part is I think we're trying to lower the costs of enforcement and eliminate some of the meters that really are not generating. I think we calculated that if, a meter generates about $500, I think, a year in town on average, your meters, if you take out the ones that we decided to eliminate because we were assuming they don't generate very much. So, you know, that, that's what it costs and...
$500 a year?
No, a year, a year, a year.
For, for meters that are active?
If you're for meters that are active, that's the average. Some of them will do more, some of them will do less, but that's, we just divided the total revenue by the number of meters, less the meters that were, that we're taking out.
Are fines, are fines a deterrent? Do they, how effective are fines in getting parking moving and enforced?
Well, enforcement is, is effective. If you know pretty surely that you are gonna get caught if you stay more than your hour, you, you know, you're pretty certain that you do your best not to get caught.
How, where does that have to be, how high?
No.
Because I think much of many of ours, it isn't that five dollars, you know, eight dollars, eight dollars.
It's eight dollars. And the normal, the, the rule of thumb is that the meter, the fine ought to be 10 to 15 times the sort of the regular parking, the hourly parking rate. So you're a little low and that's certainly worth, worth changing, but you don't want to make it a punitive sort of thing. I, you know, I, the numbers say one thing, but you know, you gotta be sort of human about it. So what I think, what we're, what I think we've recommended here, or what we are recommending, is some fairly aggressive enforcement techniques, in particular probably license plate recognition tech, so you drive in your car, the enforcement person instead of having to walk down the street chalking tires, they do it electronically basically. It's extraordinarily efficient in terms of their time as well as it really, you know, allows you to cover a lot of ground. You can do other things in the neighborhoods if you want, if you have residential parking permits and you can use that to enforce that, but the point is that it allows you to fairly easily do good enforcement. And even if the enforcement is only a warning, you know, ah, we caught you, you know, you really, but what, the other side of it is you want to build in mechanisms for people not to get caught, not to, not to exceed, sorry, not to exceed their time. And that is things like pay by cellphone, so that you're sitting at, you go to lunch and you put in hours in and you get involved in something, you know, you're exceeding your time, oh, I go on my phone and I put in my thing and bang, it's, you know, I get an extra half hour. That's a hugely customer service friendly thing, sorry. And so I think you want to be, you know, on one hand, I'm gonna tell you be tough and stern and all that, but on the other hand, I'm gonna tell you, you have to be sort of reasonable about it and find offsetting techniques that will allow people to do what you want them to do. In the same way, that, you know, adjusting the rates amongst the garages and the meters to balance it gives people choices and it's not saying, you have to pay a dollar 25 to park. It says, well, if you want to pay a dollar 25 and park in the, you know, on this block, fine, but if you don't want to pay, you park over here on the next block. And we're really talking about a block, we're not talking about, you know, across town. And so that really goes to the way the town will develop, the downtown will develop and as it gets more dense, those distances become much less significant than it is now. Sorry for a long-winded answer.
Counselman Jensen. Well, thank you.
Thank you for this information. I have two questions if you don't mind. My first one is to the city staff, doesn't the capital just bag these meters whenever they feel like it anyway? So would raising the price really just cause them to bag them more?
So we sell, the bags come with a fee and of course that fee would be adjusted to reflect the increased hourly rate. So when people bag meters, they are paying us to bag those meters.
And the state hasn't just legislated around that?
No.
If anybody's from the state is watching, don't listen to what I just said.
Actually, that's a very common misnomer, people think we put bags on and then they're, they're free parking by, and even the construction company, because I've been asked, because McPherson has the area there on Kansas, no, they have to, they have to pay, have that paid.
That's excellent news.
Very good, important to know.
My second question was, what are your thoughts on giving people four hours free parking in a garage if they purchase something from within this parking area in downtown?
I think that's a perfectly fine idea. And I think that beyond that, any new system that you, the city would purchase, both for on-street or for off-street, in all likelihood, I believe any of the systems that are available can accommodate validations, prepayments, if you're going to your doctor and the doctor wants to pay for you to, you know, they can, they go on their thing, computer and they send something out and they can do that. If you're, if you buy a bicycle at the bicycle store and they want to pay for you to, you know, they can do that. And it's the technology that permits that as, you know, compared to the days when you had to give a ticket or a token, you know, you have to run into the store to get a token to be free, you know. So there's no reason not to, not to sort of imagine whatever you want, whatever you, the city wants.
You haven't seen the level of my imagination.
Well, I think you go for, the technology will support you.
So have you seen this, a similar scenario in other cities? Because how do we incentivize people to get off the street into a garage and then spend several hours shopping in downtown?
Right.
I think that, you know, because if you only compare us to the mall and granted, we're not the mall down here, but, you know, the mall, you park for free, you walk 400 miles to get to the door, but then you're gonna spend six hours in there, so I kind of get the trade-off. So if that's what citizens are used to, how do we develop a similar scenario for downtown?
Right. Well, I, my own belief is that meter, and this is not, I think, shared widely in town here. I think people here believe that you should have, I mean, and we heard it very clearly and very passionately about two hours free parking on Kansas. And I get it and I buy it. That said, I think what you, that typically you would want to have the most convenient parking to be the most expensive.
Well, I wouldn't advocate for doing that on-street.
No, I understand.
I would only advocate for a garage.
Correct.
Just because that's where we have extra capacity.
Right. And so what I'm thinking is that you, where you have meters, you're going to want to charge a reasonable rate and a higher rate than the garage.
Absolutely.
You want to charge, if you're gonna give people free hour, two free hours of parking, you give them two hours and, you know, not a minute more. And that, those things all push people who want to stay longer to the logical place, which is the garage. This is my colleague, Eric.
You have something to add?
Sure, he does, he usually does.
And I bring this up because my wife cannot do a shopping trip in less than three and a half hours. And so I'm assuming that that's how most shopping endeavors are, so...
Well, we won't generalize, but...
I have something to add about the rates on-street versus off-street. If you notice one of the recommendations in there, it doesn't specify when rate increases will happen. Generally it just says, we recommend regular rate increases to keep up with inflation because costs go up. You'll notice that we try to normalize the rates in the garages versus the meters. So when some rates are going up, the hourly garage rates staying the same to try and move those people into the garages. The other piece of it is trying to enforce the two-hour time limits actively. We heard a lot of comments about people gaming the system, moving from one block to another, those sorts of things, taking up space. So with the new enforcement technology and identifying where spaces are available in garages, we're hoping to move people into those, people that want to stay longer and know they're gonna stay longer. Another one of the recommendations that goes to that are, these new technologies allow you to count number of available spaces, display them online or on a sign outside the garage entrance, those sorts of things. So all of those have been identified, but like Jerry said, they don't just happen, all of a sudden it's steps towards, you know, the final plan.
Thank you. Counselman Hillard.
Mayor, I'm sorry, but I have a string of comments. To start out with, I love free parking. Doesn't everyone?
Yes.
That said, and I love and I'm not surprised to hear the support for it.
Yep.
That said, for those who didn't know it, we used to, that this is, today, our parking is an enterprise fund. And it was an enterprise fund that was self-sufficient because the meter revenue did offset the lower revenue from parking garages. And they, they went up and down a little bit over the years, of course, but the enterprise fund funded our parking system. And so I'm just keenly aware that the proposal that we have right now is that we subsidize that system substantially with money from someplace else. Or at least it points out pretty clearly that, that if we go, if we leave the bagged meters downtown, we'll have to come up with other money. It's not suggesting we could fund it from parking fees anymore. And really, you know, with the best of intentions, we basically killed our parking fund balance by bagging those meters for three years without a plan. So I'm just kind of soberly looking at this because I want it to work and we have a lot of other obligations for our, our budget. And so looking at a way that this could again be a healthy enterprise fund was, was a priority for me and for the city. Also with all the development downtown, and I forget, hopefully you're gonna send the whole study out to everybody, not just this?
Oh yes, oh yes, this is really the discussion just about these sort of...
I just didn't want you to walk away with consensus from everybody just having a couple of sheets, I guess. We should be, and I'm way oversimplifying, I'm sure, but doubling the amount of, of not necessarily vehicles, but demand on the parking space in downtown in the next five years. With the hotel coming on, with all of the restaurants and so on and offices, I mean, downtown's been half, more than half empty for a long time and people still felt it was crowded. So I just think we need to face that dead-on. I like, for instance, what Councilman Jensen mentioned about incentives to be in the garages. I'm familiar with that model and it works.
Absolutely.
And rather than having free time and then oops going over and no way to cover, you know, to me, if somebody's in a garage, then if they go over, it's gonna cost them a buck.
Yeah.
You know, if they had a first two hours free or whatever, then, then it's safer. It's a way better deal financially for people. They've got to be trained into those alternatives, of course. So I wondered, I have some questions just for starters, is your thought then that no matter what, if there's a two-hour limit, that that would be two hours per vehicle per day downtown, rather than being able to move, move your car?
My, my belief, and it is only my belief, and I don't believe it corresponds exactly to the city ordinance as it currently stands, is that you should be able to come downtown and park free for two hours any day you want and after that you ought to pay. The current, as I understand it, and I am not 100% certain, but the current ordinance, I believe says you can park on any, two hours on any block. Is that what we have determined? I think that's...
So basically, we're not proposing a change to the current setup in parking on downtown Kansas Avenue. That two-hour restriction within the six to 10 blocks would remain, you would not be able to move under this. But what we heard loud and clear from the stakeholders was there was an intent to keep the parking free... the parking free as we see downtown grow. And so I just, you know, coming back to your first comments about that funding gap, we definitely hear you on that. We have concerns, but what we need to get agreement on is this what the expectation is for downtown parking? Because if we change that, of course, that may have some financial implications that we need to go back and look at. So we're trying to get.
Understood. I mean, we learned around this body that there was confusion about what that two-hour limit meant up to recently, and so a lot of us were surprised to discover, we just thought that the parking people were telling people they could move their car.
No.
And so I think we've got policy issues about, about the limits. But I also, I mean, as a consumer, I would always tell you I wanted something for free, or even as a business host, I would tell you I wanted something for free, and let somebody else worry about how to pay for it, but we're that entity, and so I just, I just wanted to.
Could I interject? Now, I think, is it, you're going to come back with, to us, with proposals for implementation? Is that?
Yes, Mayor.
Because I don't know if we want to get into the discussion tonight on the finances, and which we do and don't do.
Sure. So, Mayor, if I would just kind of, I guess, re-summarize what we're asking is, is we've got these specific recommendations, we're looking at feedback, if there were concerns of, I don't like that, or I need more information on that recommendation, and the intent would be to come back at the December 5 meeting, or a meeting later if we needed more discussion, to actually have you adopt this as the plan. We would start with implementation. Like I said, we already identified money within the fund for implementation of some of these recommendations in 2018, but knowing that funding gap that's out there, we would come back to you as also part of that implementation of talking about methods to fund that gap.
Okay. Go ahead now.
And so I was expressing some concern with some of those overall issues. So, I mean, I think before we go forward, I know we've got some money in the 2018 budget to do things, but I, as with anything else that we're doing as a city, I'd like us to have the master plan figured out before we start chipping away at it or spending money. And, and, you know, so that we've got, what policy is it we're going to change? And we've got a checklist, so we know what we can do. What exactly do we want to do with facilities and spaces? And then how does that financing work? Because they're so interrelated.
That's, that's actually the dilemma. We're asking you to do two things sort of at the same time that can't be done at the same time, but you have to do that because you can't get to the closure without it. So we're asking you, on one hand, to opine on policies that we're asking, is this okay? Can we, you know, do you agree that this is a reasonable concept? Sort of largely disregarding the financial, although the numbers are right here, and you can see, oh, it's $200,000, you know. We haven't told you how you get that yet, and you haven't, you know, you haven't addressed that, but we can't really tell you how much to, how you get money until you tell, until we figure out how much you need. And so it's sort of a circular thing, and that's really why you're, we're all caught in this dilemma. But if you could sort of, I don't know what the term is exactly, but if you could sort of forget the money for a minute, and decide what you, what you feel about the, about the recommendations, and then with the understanding that you can change your mind as soon as you see about the money, and then, you know, it gives us a chance to actually come back and say, okay, you need to raise $500,000, and, you know, here's how you do it, or here's two different ways to do it. And, but we can't really get there until we, anyway, so that's what I would hope you could see your way to do.
If I can wrap up, then, I guess your comment that the most convenient should be the most expensive is a fundamental that I've seen in other cities that I thought you would come back with.
Well.
I think it's awkward a little bit to imagine, you know, getting rid of the meters in the yellow bags, but not having parking on Kansas Avenue and the side streets, and then having a string of meters around the Capitol. You know, you're, you're taking them out on the fringes and on Kansas Avenue, but then you are leaving some too, and I need to process that through, I guess, but I think it's awkward.
Right. It is, I hear what you're saying, but understand that we're not, when we say we're taking away meters, we're not taking away parking. You still can park. In the same way that you can park today for two hours free at a yellow-bagged meter, we're just taking away the ugly yellow bag, pardon me for anyone who likes the yellow bag, and replacing it with a sign that says you can only, you can only park for two hours. So you haven't lost any parking spaces. You've only lost the, the pole and the, and the, if that's what, if you're.
But I, but we're going to have twice as many people who want to park downtown within a couple of years, and I don't want, I don't want us to make that decision for today.
So a couple of things. One, these recommendations kind of have phases, short-term, medium-term, long-term. So one of the things about that high-demand space is, for now, we're proposing to continue the free two-hour parking, but it clearly states in the report that that's something that we may need to revisit as that demand grows. I mean, all these recommendations too, we did look at that supply-demand analysis over that timeframe. The other piece of the recommendation is, we've got 5,500 spaces in private parking inventory in downtown, and so it's how do we partner with the private that have both garage and surface lots to also help provide some of that supply as demand increases downtown? And that's in, you know, like I said, in the medium-term and the longer-term recommendations, but all that's in this parking plan recommendation.
If, if, I do want to wrap up and let others talk, but I guess, talking about downtown parking somehow is akin to people's discomfort with talking about sex, or religion, or money. I have been trying to get us to look ahead and get this plan done for six years, and nobody would do it when downtown planning was coming, nobody would do it while downtown was all torn up, and I don't think anybody's going to want to do it in three years again either. So I guess I think we should be looking forward far enough to not say, oh, well, let's just do this right now, but in a couple of years, maybe we'll want to revisit it, because it will come soon.
Got it. Got you. We're going to do that. Other questions, discussion, Counselman Ortiz?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I just have a comment. I look forward to meeting with the city manager to talk about downtown parking, and I know you said that'll come later. I think it needs to come right now. You also said, you said we should probably look in to the future about that. I think it needs, to my colleagues, I think it needs to come now. We're asking people to move downtown. We have a building with elderly, and they're asked to either go to the garage, which is a block away, or go, go two blocks towards the highway. And this gentleman, as I've said before, he has oxygen tank, and he cannot, you know, he gets tickets all the time because he lives down there, and he chooses to live down there, and he can't, he can't walk that far. And, and I think there's an easy fix for it, so hopefully, hopefully, after three years of trying to pursue this, I can get an ordinance on the table that we could pass that. We're asking people to come downtown and live. We have people that cannot rent out their lofts because of parking. You can't go to the back and park, there's nowhere back there to park. And we have another building that they're looking at across from the bus station, that they want to make elderly a complex. And again, some of those elderly have cars, so we have to look at that. And with all the redevelopment, and we're asking people to move downtown, we have to accommodate them, and I think that's a very small thing. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. We'll take all of that.
One more thing.
I, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. I do want to say, I've been involved for 12 years, and this parking thing is all crazy, but we used to have, at Christmas time, we used to have free, that free parking, and we ate that because we wanted people to come downtown, and we wanted people to purchase, you know, from the vendors and the different stores. We have more stores down there now, and it's something that would, would happen, you know, like from Thanksgiving to the end of the year. And I thought that was very good because it did bring people downtown to shop, and we didn't have to worry about that. So I think that's something that we need to look at again during the special holidays, that when we want people to come down and shop, to make that accommodation, and nobody gets charged. But I know we did that for several years, we put up signs, and I know it worked very, very well. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Counselman Jensen.
Just quickly, nowhere in this plan does it cover self-driving cars?
It does not.
That's going to be here in like, I don't know, two or three days, so.
Maybe.
You know, if we're talking about a three, four-year plan, self-driving cars, won't have to deal with parking.
They'll have their own.
Thank you. This is great information. I appreciate the effort, and I commend the city staff for, because Counselman Hiller is right, this is a very, very sensitive subject for a lot of people, and it's critically important to the future of our downtown, so addressing it better late than never is excellent, and there is a lot of work to be done. It's a delicate subject. Good luck.
Yeah, there won't be easy decisions we're going for. That completes the presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Completes non-action items, we go to the announcements. First is the preliminary agenda for next week.
The November 21st agenda includes a presentation from Visit Topeka Incorporated at the date. We have one board appointment for the Citizens Advisory Council. On the consent agenda, we'll have an expenditure ordinance. For action items, we will have a resolution on the 2018 neighborhood impairment grants. For non-action items, we will have a discussion on the 2018 special alcohol grant recommendations, a discussion regarding prohibiting sale and furnishing of cigarettes, E6, tobacco products, and liquid nicotine to persons under 21, and a discussion on the 2018 legislative agenda.
Okay. Thank you. To city manager, more announcements.
The only thing is, it's been very interesting and a great opportunity to meet you. My first two weeks has been very busy, but it's been exciting.
Meetings are always like this.
Yeah. Well, you know, it's, it's interesting to listen to the parking discussion, and I'll chime in on what I've been used to, and what's worked and what hasn't in other places, and I look forward to getting involved in that discussion as well. But it's been very good discussions and getting to meet a lot of people, and I appreciate all the hospitality that everyone has showed, myself, and my wife is also very happy to be here, and we continue to work towards getting acclimated to the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comment. I want to first acknowledge the, our people who did well in last Tuesday. First, our mayor-elect, Gillisla, congratulations, and to our returning council members, Hiller and Ortiz and Emerson, congratulations. Look forward to the continuing. All of us will be together for about five more meetings before all the change takes place, so. Let's see, the invocation was done by Counselman Ortiz. You're on.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to welcome City Manager Trout to Topeka. I have yet to meet with you, but we'll get there. Now, I don't want anybody to think that I'm showing favoritism, so I will get your application for free smoke alarms. It doesn't matter if you rent or you buy, if you're renting, you know, we'll have that, and I'll get that application to you to make sure you fill out so that you're safe. So I want everybody to know that does, that has not done that yet, that I'm also going to give it to the city manager. I'm going to start, start with him. I too want to congratulate everybody that ran, whether you won or lost, you know, it's a lot to put your name in the hat. It's a lot. I was telling the mayor, I said, it's the longest six months of your life. And I think I've been sick for about the last month, and I, and now that I'm able to stop, hopefully, I can get some rest. But, you know, it is hard work, and you do put your, your name out there, you do put your life out there, and special thanks to Mr. Henderson.
Counselman Emerson.
Another time, eh?
Thanks. Counselwoman Gillisla.
Counselman Jensen.
Just quickly, my cousin Tyler is getting married this Saturday, and I want to wish him congratulations and the best.
Counselman Schwartz.
Congratulations to everybody after the Tuesday night election, and I didn't have to worry about a thing, and it was just only nice. We're having the red stocking breakfast. I'm still on the KCSL board, and that is December 9, and I do have tickets, and I encourage everybody to do that. And this next weekend, I think Stanley Flowers is going out of business and having their sales, and part of that goes to the Temple special. And also, I wanted to comment on Mars, the Mars announcements that they had with the caramel M&amp;M's and the things that they're doing with Walmart. I think Topeka is, you know, really getting our act together, and we will be a quality of life city.
Okay. Deputy Mayor Cohen.
Thank you, Mayor Ditto. Counselwoman Schwartz. I don't know if you guys know this, but Santa's coming to town. Santa is going to be at Perilon Plaza Mall starting Friday, November 24, and it'll be Friday, Saturday, and Sunday through Christmas. So we'll see you there.
Thank you. Counselman Hiller.
First, I wanted to thank staff and those on the council as well, on behalf of my mentee, Tin Royal from Myanmar, and the team of Southeast Asian young leaders that were here for a month. They left on Friday. They love Topeka. They learn so much. Tin was, you know, with this, was particularly interested in local government, and so spent time in every single city department, learning about how they operate, and I got, and then some private sector and one county source as well, and I got feedback from people that he visited with, how much they learned as well, to see what we take for granted through his eyes. Dita was at the DA's office, was particularly interested in learning about how to combat corruption in Indonesia, so she spent time with the DA and his staff and in the courtrooms. And Jeff from Thailand was at the League of Kansas Municipalities. He's a parliamentary staffer in particularly advising about agricultural issues in a state in Thailand, which also has strong agricultural versus urban interests, and so they really love Topeka, all three of them, and appreciate what everybody did to just be somebody, a place they wanted to come, and then to welcome them. I too welcome Brent Trout, and thanks to Doug Gerber for your service. It's been good. Congrats to the winners, and thanks really to all candidates, as others have mentioned, and the people who hosted and helped them, and the volunteers. And people were hustling all over this town, people who hosted the Candidates Forum, and so on, who made an effort. I want to give credit to the candidates and the work that they did for the fact that our numbers were up. We'll get our finals on Thursday when the county certifies them, but we all wanted to see that happen, and so good for us. Thank you.
Counselman Claire.
Welcome. Congrats. By time is considered, time is not exciting.
Let's see, abridged. The abridged version.
I think at some point, we need to start saying we are a city that has great quality of life, and not that we're going to get there. I think we are there, you know? We just need to, we need to know that ourselves and believe that. Also, Sheepdog Impact Assistances have a turkey trot Thanksgiving morning at 8:30 at the Combat Air Museum, it's one mile, 5K, and all the money raised will provide Christmas gifts to the military and first responder families. I know they already have 80, 90 runners. So if you want to be a part of that, go to their Facebook page, SDIA Kansas.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you. The announcements, there are no one signed for public comment. We have no executive session, so the meeting is adjourned. That's not bad. I thought it would be. Did you bring any?